All right, let's stop the chitter chatter.
We're not ready to start the meeting yet, but we're getting very close. So Lisa, I'll keep you posted, okay?
Sounds good. I'll wait to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Andy.
Thanks again, Andy, for being in person for us. I don't think they're ready with audio yet, but I can see he acknowledging us.
Might be a delay.
Oh, there you go. We can hear you now. And for those in the audience, I think we're just waiting a couple more minutes for staff to be ready. So hang with us.
Madam Chair, I think we're ready in-house now.
Great, thank you. With that, I am filling in for our fearless leader, Ryan, today. So I would like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission for the date of August 6th. And let's begin with the roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Pittsir? Commissioner McCarville?
Here.
Commissioner Seal? Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Absent are Commissioners Grove and Fitzgerald. And I understand Commissioner Cassinelli will be joining us shortly, and we'll announce his arrival when he gets here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, welcome to those watching in. Before we move forward with the agenda, I'm just going to give a couple of directions about our process tonight. So, a lot of the commissioners are meeting online via Zoom, and we have one commissioner in person at City Hall. On your screen, you should see the commissioners who are present for the evening. We also have on-call staff from the city attorney and the city clerk offices. Staff from our planning and zoning department will also be on the call as well. Everybody else online are the attendees. You can observe the meeting, and we can see that you're there, but your ability to talk and be seen will be muted. During the public testimony portion of the meeting, you'll be, you can have the opportunity to be unmuted and able to comment if you'd like. If you previously sent a presentation for the meeting, it will be displayed on the screen, and the clerk will run the presentation for you. The clerk can also assist with bringing up a slide from another presentation if you need it. Just ask. If you just want to watch the meeting, we encourage you to watch the live streaming on the city's YouTube channel, which is also accessible at meridiansity.org/live. Once public testimony is open, the clerk will call the names of those who've signed up to testify on the website, and then they will unmute you. The chair, or I will call you individually at that point in time. So, we'll ask you to state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to address the commission for any comments you might want to make. And we may ask for questions for clarification, but once you're done, they will mute you as well, and you will no longer be able to speak. Once all those who have signed up in advance are called, we will ask if there's anybody else who would like to testify before we close the public hearing. And if you'd like to speak on a topic, you are welcome to raise your hand button in the Zoom app. Or if you're listening through your cellphone or landline, you can press star nine and wait for your name to be called. If you're listening on multiple devices, like a computer and a phone, make sure you mute those devices so that you don't experience feedback. And we cannot take questions until the public testimony portion. So if you have a process question during the meeting, you can reach out to the city clerk's office at cityclerk@meridiansity.org, and they'll attempt to help you as fast as possible. And I believe that they also have a room at City Hall that they might take you to if you're there in person to testify, so that everybody can hear you without feedback issues on Zoom. So, on the agenda tonight, the first item is the adoption of the agenda, and we have a few changes to take place. So, if you're here for item 3, 4, 5, or number 9, all of those items are requesting continuance at this point in time. So, we will be amending the agenda to reflect that. So, let me read those off really quick for you. My mouse is not working with me. So, item 3 is requesting a continuance, and that is for H-2020-0046 for the gateway at 10 Mile. And they will be requesting continuance to September 3rd. The item for Pure Vita Ridge Ranch, H-2020-0064, is requesting a continuance for the date of September 3rd. And we have item 5, which is the Pearson subdivision, requesting a continuance to the date of August 20th. And then we have item number 9, which is the TM Center Project, H-2020-0074, requesting a continuance to the date of September 3rd as well. So, with that in mind, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as modified? I've got multiple motions and seconds. I think Commissioner McCarville moved, and then Commissioner Seal seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up on the agenda is our consent agenda, and at this point, we have two sets of meeting minutes to approve. So, we will be approving the minutes of the July 9th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, as well as the July 16th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved. Commissioner McCarville makes a motion, and Commissioner Seal seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. With that, we are going to open up those items that requested continuance just for the purpose of continuing them. So, we'll start with item number H-2020-0046 for the gateway at 10 Mile, and they are requesting the continuance to the date of September 3rd. I'll pause for a second and see if staff wanted to make any other comments about that one.
Chair, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, nothing really from staff. The applicant is continuing to work through some issues with us, so we anticipate having, they just need more time to resolve some of those issues. And hopefully, by that next hearing date, we should have that ready to go for you and bring it forth with our recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Bill. With that, can I get a motion to continue the public hearing for H-2020-0046 for Gateway at 10 Mile to the date of September 3rd?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pittsir moves, Commissioner Seal seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. On to the next one. Again, we're opening the public hearing for Pure Vita Ridge Ranch, H-2020-0064. The applicant's requesting a continuance to the date of September 3rd, and I believe that the reason for this one is to allow ACHD time to review the application and provide a staff report to the city. If staff has anything else to add, they're more than welcome to.
Staff has no further comments.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Sonia. With that, can I get a motion to continue the public hearing for Pure Vita Ridge Ranch to H-2020-0064 to the date of September 3rd?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Pittsir moved, Commissioner McCarville second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, on to the next one. Item number 5 is Pearson subdivision, H-2020-0075, and they are requesting a continuance to the date of August 20th. And staff said that there was a processing error, and that they would just like two weeks to make sure that they meet the notification and timing deadlines. I don't think that they've got any other comments that they probably need to add to that one. But with that, can I get a motion to move or continue the public hearing for Pearson subdivision, H-2020-0075, to the date of August 20th?
So moved.
Second.
I'll give that one to Commissioner Seal this time. So Commissioner McCarville seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'm tired of talking, so I'm going to turn it back to staff and open up the public hearing for Armor Fitness, H-2020-0076. And we'll begin with the staff report.
Good evening, Ms. Chair and members of the commission. This is Alan Tiefenbach, Associate Planner with City of Meridian. Good evening. This is a proposal for a conditional use. So, the property is approximately 1.8 acres, so just a little short of 2 acres. It's located at 1649 East Pine Avenue, which is the southeast quadrant of North Locust Grove Drive in East Pine. So, on the left, you can see the future land use map, which recommends it for industrial. It's proper, it's presently zoned industrial. This request is for a conditional use to allow a little more than a 15,000-square-foot arts, entertainment, and recreation facility. So, this use is allowed by conditional use in the industrial, light industrial zone district. Again, the subject property is a vacant lot now. It's at the corner of North Locust Grove and East Pine. Directly east of the property is a preschool. South of the property is a trucking company. West of the property is an electric supply store, and north of the property is a tool manufacturer. There's also existing single-family northwest quadrant. And I put these pictures up just to show you what has been built there. When the NOLA subdivision was developed, there were already sidewalks and landscape strips that were put in, the 25-foot required buffers. So, the one on the upper left is looking south down Locust Grove. Looking east on Pine, the, if you look at the bottom left corner, you can see the whole vacant lot there where the fence is sort of projecting out, and then the daycare off in the distance. That's the lot that you're looking at right now. That's the vacant lot. To the top east is an internal access. That access runs south of the daycare and directly connects to NOLA. And then the last picture, bottom right-hand corner, is taken from NOLA looking west, looking over towards the property. Again, the applicant proposes to build about a 15,000-square-foot Rock and Armor Fitness Center. This proposed use is a sports performance center for training and physical therapy. It specializes in strength condition and rehabilitation for athletes. It's considered an indoor recreation facility, which is allowed by conditional use. It's important to note that this is not a drop-in fitness center, like one of your after-work gyms. These are classes and personal sessions that operate by appointment only between 8:00 and 6:00. And this, this also proposes a 3,600-square-foot outdoor training and warm-up center. That's what you can see here. This would, this would be sod. This, this, obviously, this would only occur during certain months, wouldn't occur in the winter. But this is for the athletes to warm up and to train before they actually do their fitness. The primary access will occur from a shared driveway, which is to the north here. There is also a secondary access that's shown here and shown here. Up to, the daycare is, well, it's actually more about right over here, and this comes to the south of the daycare and then connects over to NOLA Road. NOLA Road comes up north-south here and connects to Pine. The applicant has not submitted proof that there's cross-access easements, so we don't know whether or not the applicant, the property owner over to the right, has access across this lot. They may, but we haven't seen those. That is a condition of approval, is that they be able to provide those at time of CCC. I think, and the other thing is that based on a parking, based on the parking spaces of one space per 500 square foot, 31 parking spaces were required. There's much less parking requirements for industrial, but this is not, really not an industrial use. This is a commercial use. Therefore, we're requiring that they provide parking at the commercial use, which would be one per 500. One thing I want to mention, there's a correction in the staff report. If you look at Condition 3A, there's a recommendation for the property owner to the east to provide access, but the property owner to the east is not part of this project. So, we're asking you to just strike that condition. We cannot make the property owner at the other property provide access. However, we do need to mention that the conditions of approval should mention that access easements with a, should be provided between this subject property and the property to the east, because you'll notice there's two driveways there. And again, we don't have proof of access. Both, both north Locust Grove and East Pine are arterial roads. Like I mentioned, there's 25-foot landscape buffers that were, that were already installed there. The sidewalk is already there as well. However, there's several trees in these landscape buffers that have since died. We're recommending that a condition of approval that they replace these trees. And finally, there are conceptual elevations that were provided by the applicant. The west here would be on the corner of North Locust Grove and Pine. The north elevation is also very visible. You would see this coming down Pine. One of the, one of the concerns that we had is you'll notice the elevations are pretty different. If you look at the one on the west and you look at the one on the north, they definitely have sort of a different flavor to them. The other thing is that we have requirements in our Architectural Standards Manual that you can't use metal as a primary field material. It's, it's possible that they could ask for a design exception, but as is shown here, they're proposing to use prefabricated metal panel. The other thing is that there's a certain requirement that roofs have to modulate every certain feet, and if you look, this roof has a long, straight look to it. So, they're either going to have to ask for a design exception, or they're going to have to address this. If you look at the north elevation, they're showing what I think are garage doors, and we might want to defer to the applicant for that, but there are some additional requirements about garage doors and whether or not roll-up doors should be facing Pine Avenue. So, again, this, it's important to mention that this is an industrial zone district, but this use is listed as a conditional use. So, the use has already been deemed appropriate in the zone district. We're just down to conditioning to deal with mitigating any impacts. With that, staff would recommend approval of this, with, again, with the condition 3A be stricken to not require, obviously, have, try to have a property owner to the east provide access, and to make the second condition have access easements plural. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I think we could hear from the applicant if they're available.
Madam Chair, Mr. Garner is joining us via Zoom. Mr. Garner, you have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioners. Glad to be with you tonight. Just to be brief, we have been provided the staff report. We are in agreement with the conditions. Just a couple of things that were brought up by Alan in his presentation. I do, I am in, I do have the cross-access agreement that is, I believe, the one to the north that comes in there off of Pine between the daycare and the property in question. I think that there is another cross-access agreement for that access on the south. I do not believe I have that one yet, but it is to be coming to me. So, as soon as I have those, as has been conditioned, we'll go ahead and provide those on the architectural site plan, the instrument number, so that they can be referenced. So, that was that. And then, if you're looking, Alan, do you have the ability to manipulate the screen?
Yes, I do. You want me to, if you're talking about my presentation, correct?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you go back to those elevations, the conceptual, those are not overhead doors on that north side. There are no overhead doors except on the east end of the building that goes out into that practice area. And so, we will work with on the, in the CCC and the DR, which is coming up next, if we get the conditional use permit, then we will work with staff on addressing the elevations as necessary to provide, to make them in compliance with the architectural standards. But yes, we are in agreement with the conditions and are, stand for any questions if you have any for me.
And sir, can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry, it's Matt Garner, 1211 West Hawk Place in Napa, Idaho, 83651.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Garner. Thanks, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Just for disclosure here, I've, I am a frequenter of Rock and Armor, especially in the wintertime, so just wanted to put that out there. I don't see it as a conflict of any kind, but I just wanted folks to know.
Thanks, Commissioner Seal. Any concerns with Commissioner Seal's note there? Seeing Commissioner Pittsir shake her head no, hearing nothing from Commissioner McCarville, I think you're good to go. I'm seeing a head shake no. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
For the record, I just wanted to note that Commissioner Cassinelli joined us at 6:20 PM.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Commissioner Cassinelli.
Thank you, sir. I'm a little tardy this evening.
It's all right. We're glad to have you. Mr. Garner, so on the, the north side, and we, looking at the renderings here, it looks like there's kind of different elevations proposed for the west and the north side. Can you explain a little bit more about what the process is going to look like? I know you'll, you'll work with staff on the design review of the building, but as that's kind of, those are two primary roads that, for Meridian, and I'd love to see maybe a little more consistency between those. But would you mind expanding on that a little bit?
Well, I think, for me, I think that these renderings, you know, it's not a 3D model like you would want to see where you have some dimensionality to it. But I would contest that, that, that some of those elements that are visible on the west elevation do carry around for this north side, and you wouldn't be able to see it. So, if you look at the west elevation there on the top, you see the, the smaller volume on the left-hand side of the screen that pops off of the side of the building. You don't necessarily see that in the north elevation because of the limitations of the elevation. But that volume does pop out, and it does articulate, because you have a lower roof that's lower than that higher roof. And so, there are some of those elements that do tie around, plus the materials are carrying around as well. You'll see the white stucco on the west elevation and that dark metal that does come around to the other side of the building on the north as well. So, we have made an attempt to try and carry some of those things around. But as, as far as going, moving forward, what we'll end up doing is I will go through the Architectural Standards Manual and verify areas where we are compliant and maybe areas that we're not compliant. And part of it is the, where, when I met with staff, they did talk about this is an industrial zone. And so, some of these things that are on the building, they would be fine in an industrial zone. And so, I think that they're, because he wants to consider it a commercial building, which it is, an industrial zone, maybe there's a happy medium. And we have tried to do that. This, there have been revisions since our pre-application meeting, where we have gone back and tried to modify and put some things in there to carry that, those themes around the building. And so, we'll continue to work with staff to make sure that we do satisfy the architectural standards.
Thank you, Mr. Garner. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant right now? Hearing none. I'm going to ask if there's anyone for public testimony, and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Garner, in a minute.
You bet. You bet.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign in to testify on this one tonight?
Madam Chair, we do have a couple of sign-ins. The first of which is, oh, I apologize, they did not indicate a wish to testify. So, technically, no, we do not have anybody signed up to testify tonight.
With that, in using Commissioner Seal's eyes to see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to testify, if anyone would like to testify in this application, if you would raise your hand in the Zoom app, or you would wave at City Hall, we'll give you a chance to speak for a minute if you'd like. It looks like we have no takers, so. All right, Mr. Garner, one more question for you I have. So, obviously, this area was planned for industrial. I'm just curious on why, why you chose the industrial site instead of looking for a traditional commercial site for your project.
Well, I think that that would be a question that would best be answered by the owner if he wanted to. I think that it was just a parcel of land that, that he found, and it was a good location for him. And so, that was, that was why he chose that spot.
Fair enough. Any other question?
I guess that's, that's, that's as much as I can answer, because I, I don't really know that answer, but that would be my speculation.
Commissioners, any other thoughts or questions you'd like to raise before we close the public hearing on this one? Hearing none.
Madam Chair, there is somebody raising their hand in the, in the audience.
Okay. If there's someone raising their hand, we can, I, I think it's, since it's still open, we can certainly still take that. Madam Clerk, can you help them get, get to a spot where they can speak for us?
Hi, this is Tim Williams, the owner of Rock and Armor. To answer your question, we're literally just around the corner on Locust Grove from there. So, I drive by that piece of land. Steve Hill owns it and have been admiring it for six years now. And so, we're really excited that it's really close to where we were currently at, and it's a good location for our clients. And they won't have to go much further or in a different route to receive the services we provide, so.
Thank you, Tim. If you wouldn't mind, would you state your address for the record as well?
Timothy Williams, my home address or work address.
I think.
535 North Locust Grove Road, Suite 170 in Meridian.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for, for Tim or Mr. Garner here? Mr. Garner, any other following comments you want to make after that?
No, I don't think so, but I, I guess the one thing that I would add is relative to the parking, Tim talked a little bit about the parking. And when we had our pre-application meeting, we came back and, and we had done our analysis, parking analysis, at the one space per 500 square feet of building. And we came in, we had like 30 spaces. And Tim was, you know, questioning whether that would be enough. After consulting with Tim Williams, the owner, and getting his feedback on the, the number of people that would be visiting the, the facility at one given time, we did go back in and add and pretty much maximize the parking on the site to make sure that there would be adequate parking. And so, that was also something that was addressed from the pre-application meeting to its current iteration. So, we should have plenty of parking available to all the, the clients as they come.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right. If there's no more questions for Mr. Garner, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Rock and Armor Fitness, H-2020-0076.
So moved.
Commissioner Cassinelli moved second from Commissioner Seal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And just a reminder, this is a conditional use request, so we are the deciding body on this one. So, if we make a motion to, we're not recommending approval, we are the approval body on this one. So, just keep that in mind. Anyone want to go first? Commissioner Cassinelli.
Happy to jump in, even though I was late. I think it's kind of, kind of got an industrial design look to it. I like it. I think the location is prime. We've got that development going in, just to, I think it's 43 Pine or whatever all that is there to the north side there. So, I think it's a great fit, a great spot. It'll, it kind of ties in the, the industrial look and feel, so. um, look and feel, so I like it. And I think we're good on parking.
I was waiting for that comment, Commissioner Cassinelli.
I figured, I, yeah, I better say something on that, right?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner McCarville.
Um, yeah, I always, I, I kind of hate to see our, uh, light industrial getting eaten up, but, um, I, I think if they had the, or eye on this piece of land for that long and, uh, being able to bring current clientele, uh, and fill in that space, I think it's, it's a good fit. And I can see where they're talking about, it probably has more dimension than what we can really see here. I think it'd be a good fit.
Um, I'll jump in with my comments, too. I, I think that, I, I agree with the two comments you both made that it looks like they've done a good job of trying to incorporate a industrial commercial design into the area so that it's, it's matching and consistent, which I certainly appreciate. Um, and I also appreciate that they did the commercial parking standards because this type of use would typically have more people coming in and out of it than an industrial use would. And if for some reason the, the gym ever, you know, decided to not operate in this building, it could be converted back to an industrial building, so I appreciate that, too. My only challenge is, again, I, I know that industrial is really hard to find right now anywhere in Meridian, and it's always tough because, um, a lot of churches, gyms, daycares, um, we've seen a lot of requests in industrial zones for those types of projects to kind of come in and, you know, we take them one, one at a time, and they are allowed with a conditional use permit, so. Um, it's not that it doesn't fit, it's just, I, I always hate seeing prime commercial grounds taken up or prime industrial ground taken up when there's not very much available in the city. Um, that being said, I, I don't really see a reason to deny the project based just on that. Um, that's just a, a personal note that I wish that we had more industrial buildings because there's a lot of great manufacturers out there that we could be attracting to the city of Meridian and, um, I, I know that this one will be a, a good, solid company, and I'm, I'm sure that they pay their people well and will have some great opportunities for clients and still revenue opportunities that the city ends up benefiting from, from the, the new construction. So those are my comments. Commissioner Pitts, sir?
Uh, Madam Chair, um, I'm just going to go ahead and start. After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move we approve the conditional use permit of file number twenty twenty dash zero zero seven six for Rockin Armor Fitness.
Okay, we have a motion. Um, do we have a second?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
There, uh, we need to make sure that we strike, uh, condition three A as per staff, staff's request. And then they wanted a condition on, uh, item number two, uh, for, to elaborate on easements, not just easement.
Commissioner Seal, I had that note in front of me and I forgot to read it, so, yeah, um, Commissioner Pitts, you'd be willing to modify your motion to strike three A, yeah, in the staff report and also allow access easements, um, for the property on the east?
Yes, yes, I had the notes as well, and I didn't read them either. Uh, yes, so I moved that, uh, we, uh, approve the conditional use permit, uh, with the condition that we strike number three A and, uh, make it conditioned for, uh, easements, access, um, for file number twenty twenty dash zero zero seven six.
Second.
Okay. I've got a motion by Commissioner Pitts there and a second by Commissioner Seal. Uh, any discussion? I'm not hearing anybody say yes, but all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Mr. Garner.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Alan.
With that, we will move on to public hearing, item number seven, which is for sixteen twenty-five, uh, East Bentley Drive, H dash twenty twenty dash zero seven eight, and we'll begin with the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Alan Heathenbach, Associate Planner with the City of Meridian. Uh, this is a proposal for an annexation and a rezoning. The property is about one and a half acres, presently within unincorporated Ada County Zone R one. It's located at the southeast quadrant of South Locust Grove and East Bentley Drive. This is a request to annex and zone to allow a forty, forty-eight hundred square foot office building and a future lot with two lots total. So again, the, the subject property is at the southeast corner of South Locust Grove and East Bentley. It contains right now a twenty-one-ish square foot house. Uh, south, it, it's interesting the way the road is set up. Let me show you here. If you look at the picture on the left, that is looking at the property. The house on the left is the, the house that will eventually be demolished. And that road that you're looking at with the barrier, that's kind of a no man's land. Um, it, it doesn't, I'm not even sure if it has a name, but it is a right-of-way. If you look to the picture on the right, you're looking down Locust Grove, and that picture was taken to show you that there is existing sidewalk now and to show you the house and the existing lot. Excuse me. And the, on the bottom there, you're standing on Bentley, Bentley turns into Truss. Truss, uh, if you look at this white truck there, the road that goes on beyond that tru, that truck is Truss. Where you see this road curve, that is Bentley. Here is the site plan. So immediately to the north, south, and east of this property is low-density residential. Although over to the west and further to the south is highly intensive non-commercial uses. So again, to the west is Renaissance High School and the Idaho, uh, Idaho College of Osteopathic Medicine. And if you go to the south, uh, on the other side of Highway eighty-four, we've got pretty intensive uses, uh, including fast food restaurants, gas stations, and movie theaters. It's important to note that the comprehensive plan recommends this area for commercial. Uh, and then just going east, just east of this property, it's recommended for a mixed-use neighborhood. So that's just smaller levels of commercial, some residence, it's kind of a mix, it's, it's transitional use running up to that. Uh, sidewalks, as I said, already exist along South Locust, uh, although the applicant will be required to install a buffer. Uh, along Locust here, this sidewalk's already existing, the applicant will have to put in a buffer there, like I said. Uh, the, the business proposed with this right now is presently located, uh, at two thirteen East Fifth Street, Meridian, and they're sharing space in a third hundred, thirty-eight hundred square foot building. Uh, that existing business leases, the one we're talking about, about thirteen hundred feet of available space in this, and they're not the owner of that building. The applicant stated that the size and the configuration of the present building doesn't lend themselves to the existing operations. They can't expand, it's just not a very good working environment. So the applicant wants to build a larger building and move their business here. This is a, a survey-type company, so it's a professional-level business. It's not the type that you imagine, people are coming and going all the time. It's where people are coming in or even working remotely, and they're working their eight hours doing survey and engineering-type work, and then they're leaving. Uh, it's, the, as I mentioned, there's a single-family residence that's existing on the property. That's what you see right here. Single-family residences is not allowed in commercial zone districts. So one of the conditions, uh, uh, conditions of approval is that this house would have to be removed uh, prior to C O, when they come in and actually do the. One thing I wanted to mention is that the property is technically two lots. There's, there's the one lot that's over an acre, and then there's, you can't see it here, but there's a little spike strip that's, that's owned here, or what you would probably call a spike strip, very long, narrow lot. And the reason why I bring that up is that the property is technically two lots. Uh, the applicant eventually wants to do a property boundary adjustment, move the lot line down towards the middle and turn it into two lots. Now, that's not what they're doing with this proposal, uh, but they would be able to do that as an administrative process because they already have two lots. Uh, although, the, although the staff wanted to make sure that, uh, because the applicant is considering eventually a second business there, um, we wanted to make sure that they took that into account with the annexation and give us some kind of conceptual site plan about how that business should be laid out, especially with such a visible road being Locust Grove and the residences to the east. And we wanted to make sure that the most efficient parking and that the parking was wrapped. So what you see here on the south is, this is the building that they're proposing now, forty-eight hundred square feet-ish, and that's called the Land Solutions. Up here is conceptual. We don't know if and when this is going to be built, uh, but they've demonstrated that they have enough parking for this business. Uh, each business has about seventeen spaces, which is well beyond the ten that they're required. Uh, one thing that we did have a concern about was when this building is demolished, how long will it be until something else is developed on the northern portion of that property? What we didn't want to have happen was it to be sort of, I'll give, use the word again, a no man's land where there's just grass and weeds and, and it sort of looks like an undeveloped lot for some amount of time. Uh, staff recommends that, uh, when that, when that house goes, that until this property is developed, that this would be native, this would be seeded with native seed and kept free from weeds to, to look more like a part of the property versus just something that's sort of sitting there fallow. Uh, and the other thing I guess I wanted to mention again is, is since, uh, since we wrote the staff report, there has been at least one letter from an adjacent property owner. Um, the, the applicant has told me that the committee meeting did have a few people that showed up with concerns. Uh, the biggest concerns from what I understand is just that they're residents in the county, and they do not want the city, uh, to be annexing that as commercial. Uh, there was some, uh, concerns expressed in a letter that I received today, uh, about traffic. Uh, it, there's only one way into this property. Coming up Locust Grove and taking Bentley is the only way in. You can't go east because it turns into cul-de-sacs and a dead end. Now, eventually that may go through, but as it is right now, there's only one way in. Uh, staff did not have major concerns about the, the traffic with this, and the reason why is because this is a professional office uh, for, for not very many people doing professional-level surveys. So again, they're, they're coming in, they're doing their eight hours of work at their computers, and they're going home. This is not a retail store or some kind of big business that's going to be generating very much traffic at all. It's very, very compatible with what would be a residential neighborhood, and it would be very consistent, uh, with what you see in a transitional use such as mixed-use, uh, mixed-use neighborhood. Uh, with that, uh, staff recommends approval on this with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Alan. Um, any questions for staff?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
I just wanted to make sure the conceptual site plan that you have up here is different from what's in the application material. Uh, is this the conceptual site plan that's here? Is that something that was modified? And that's what they're going with? Because it is quite a bit different.
It's very different. The, the original site plan that they submitted, um, the staff, as, as staff was, was, so when staff is writing the staff report, we're reviewing these things, and we're really going through the analysis and looking at this. And we discussed this as a staff, and it, it was our, as it moved forward, it became more apparent that he wanted to do a second building. And the other thing was that we did, we weren't really thrilled about the original layout. So we conveyed that back to the prop, uh, back to the applicant. And last week, the applicant gave us the most la, the latest version of the site plan. So what you see here in front of you is the version that is being proposed tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Alan.
Commissioner. Go ahead.
Um, sorry, uh, Alan, I was wondering, is there a, what's the height restriction, uh, in this area?
Let me see, I think I might have that off the top of my head. I'm hearing Bill say fifty feet. Didn't have it right in front of me.
Okay, and this is proposed to be a single-story, is that correct?
Correct, single-story building.
Okay.
And, uh, let's see, yeah, did, did provide elevation, but the single-story somewhat cost, somewhat industrial looking building.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't catch that.
Yeah, Alan, you're cutting out a little bit.
Oh, sorry, um, yeah, it's a, if you look in the staff report, the most recent version of, of what's been proposed to us is in there. You know, we, we did again have a little bit of concerns about the roof and the metal that's being proposed. That's all something that'll be worked out with the C Z C, but we did express those concerns in the staff report. That's on page ten of the staff report.
Did you catch enough of that, Commissioner Cassinelli?
Uh, yeah, and I can look at, there at page ten, and I guess, um, uh, so fifty, fifty feet. Because I'm also curious about what might come in the future there. Is it a buts, uh, residential, so? But I think that, I, I, I'm clear for now. Yes, thank you.
And I believe, um, looking at what's neighboring around there, it's a lot of lower-density homes. And this is an area that during the comprehensive planning process, I know that, um, the committee spent a lot of time on this area and decided not to really make any significant change because for that area to redevelop all those properties, we'd pretty much have to redevelop it together. And it was unlikely that that was going to happen, so we, um, I, I think it might be that we get one of these every once in a while. Um, and I think because it's located on Locust Grove, that makes it a little bit easier than being something that's kind of in the middle of that. That, they will only access Bentley to come in and, um, like Alan explained, it's, it's just for an office use, that's not a retail location, so it won't have a lot of traffic in and out of it. Any other questions for Alan? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can we bring the applicant on?
Madam Chair, he's in the building tonight, so we're getting him set up right now.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Clint Hanson, uh, two thirty-one East Fifth Street, Suite A in Meridian. Uh, me and, uh, my business partner Vince are proposing to annex and rezone this property. We were kind of, um, I guess not as familiar with the process as we thought for the annexation and rezone. We didn't know we needed to have this site plan as developed as it is. So that's why we tried to work at the last minute to try to complete a, a conceptual site plan that was for this, uh, review. We just had envisioned going through the annexation and rezone process and then working with city to develop the site plan, you know, nail it down. But I think what we've come up with is pretty close to what we, you know, had, had originally thought. We'd like to, like I said, make it into two building lots. Um, with ours being a flex space with the office and garage, garages for the survey, um, field crews. Um, we've been operating in Meridian for sixteen years, serving in the valley for over twenty, so. We've been here a long time. We're invested in Meridian, and we really like, you know, Meridian in the area. We've looked for property and flex space for a long time. There just isn't a whole lot of flex space available for our type of use where we need office for the drafting and design and everything that we do, and then garage spaces for our, you know, our field crews. So this would work out perfect for us, um, being, uh, right there, close to access to Eagle and to Meridian Road. And we, I mean, we survey all over the valley with our, uh, land surveying, so it's, it's perfect for us. I know there's a lot of history in this neighborhood, um, with the city and the neighborhood and the comp plan that the city just adopted, future land use map and stuff. And I, in our neighborhood meeting, the, the neighbors expressed, a lot of them expressed that they don't really have a problem with what we're doing other than it has to be annexed and rezoned. And they're, that's what they're against, is the annexation and rezone. Um, and I'm sure there's, um, some that will testify tonight, you'll hear their concerns. And that's what we express to them, is they need to come and express their, their concerns here at the, at the hearing, so. Yeah, I didn't, any other questions for me, I guess?
Uh, any questions for Mr. Hanson?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli.
Um, are, since, uh, since some of this, uh, you just kind of put together, I guess, the site plan at the last minute, uh, I'm assuming is that the same for the elevation? And are you, um, I guess, I want to know that, I want to kind of see that it's tied into, you know, not so industrial, but it's sort of blends in with the residential that's in there behind, is that? And I don't know what, uh, the staff is, because I'm trying to find it and I can't, but I don't know what the, what the staff is calling for on that.
Yeah, the elevations that we had submitted, that are shown on the page ten of the staff report, uh, those, again, were, when I was instructed, when I submitted the application, was just very preliminary, conceptual, just so they kind of have an idea of what we're doing and proposing for the property. And we certainly, this isn't nailed in stone as far as all the architectural, I mean, uh, material and, and necessarily the roofline and stuff. This was just a kind of a conceptual idea of a flex space that we would like to, to do. So we still need to develop this, uh, with our development agreement. And, um, when we go to submit for the, for the billing permit or, uh, whatever, the conditional use or whatever it will be at that time, then we will work with staff to, to make sure that that all is conducive to what the city wants and what is, you know, best for everybody's use, too, in the neighborhood, so.
All right, thank you.
We're, we're going to pull up, that, sorry, Alan Tiefenbach, we're pulling up the elevations, uh, for you so that you can see, uh, them. Uh, we did express some concerns about, uh, the usage of metal that was being proposed and some of the rough. Uh, and we, we wanted again, just like the other one, we wanted to make sure those concerns were expressed. That we weren't totally, we, we like what he's doing, we'll work with them. We weren't totally, we weren't totally on board with the, with the architecture because we didn't think it fit with the neighborhood, but we're pulling up the elevations right now.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Um, any other questions for Mr. Hanson while staff is pulling up that rendering? None, I think we'll just wait a minute. And Alan, just to confirm, they're going to have to still go through a design review with the city on these buildings and make sure that they meet the standard code for commercial, correct?
Yeah, yes ma'am, when we, when we have these conceptuals put up, we don't want to get too bound into them during, into the hearing. We like to have the, the commission and/or the council look at them to get a sense. But if, but if there's some issues up front, we especially want to make sure that the applicant knows in the hearing, so it's not a surprise that, that the amount of metal that they're showing here and probably the articulation of rough is going to be an issue. And they also have to turn the garage doors, can't be facing public streets. So they'll know those things and yes, we'll be doing that with the certificate of zoning compliance and the design review.
Thanks, Alan. Any other questions for staff or the applicant at this point? All right, um, thanks, Alan. And, and Madam Clerk, do we have a, a couple of people sign in to testify, it sounds like?
Madam Chair, we don't have anybody signed in to testify.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom that would like to testify? If so, raise your hand or, uh, um, indicate that you'd like to, uh, testify and we'll get you online.
Madam Chair, no one is indicating a wish to testify.
Well, I'm sorry, what was that?
No one is indicating a wish to testify either online or in the room.
Okay, um, Alan, I don't know that everybody had a chance to probably see the letter that you received today. Um, could you resummarize for us what that testimony said?
Um, yeah, actually, let me just see if I can pull it up quickly for you. Yeah. Hang on one second, Clerk, help me, I can't navigate faster.
Thanks, Alan, we appreciate you. It's always harder when you're trying to navigate something while you've got a hundred people watching you too.
Madam Chair.
That, that's exactly right.
I believe the main concerns from neighbors were just that they, they wanted to remain in the county and wanted assurance that they weren't going to be annexed in. So my, my answer to them would be that no one's going to force to annex anybody into the city of Kuna. Um, we, we take them only as people bring them to us.
Meridian.
Uh, Meridian, I'm sorry, did I just say Kuna? Wow, it's been a long day, I'm sorry.
Actually, Mr. Parsons has it on his computer, he's having it on the Y drive. So give me just a second, it'll come up. Thank you, Chris, there it is.
So it looks like the three main concerns, um, is the access point, the, uh, the concern about wanting to stay in the county versus coming into the city of Meridian and that the, uh, property is close to homes. And so they would prefer the hours of eight to five. So we can certainly ask the applicant to address what their hours of operation would look like. Okay. Thanks, Alan, appreciate it.
That was Chris's doing, thank him.
Thanks, Chris. Um, with that, Mr. Hanson, uh, do you have any comments? Can you share about what your hours of operation look like or answer any of those other concerns that were addressed in that letter?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't get through the letter, but I did see that number two that said, you know, eight to five and that's certainly what we are. We usually, right now in the summertime, start a little earlier than that and get off, you know, everybody goes home by three or so, three or four. Most, you know, sometimes we work maybe till six or so with, I mean, the crew's trying to finish up projects, but we're not in all hours of the day type of operation and, you know, close up shop and go home and it'll just be all quiet. So I know one of the neighbors expressed for lighting too, that we just consider that with the, with the lighting to not be pointed towards the houses and stuff. And yeah, it's certainly something we would obviously do. And I'm thinking that the city would require anyways at that point. But yeah, what, what I saw with that letter, we certainly conducive with what they're saying.
Thanks, Mr. Hanson. Anything else you'd like to, oh, Commissioner Seal, did you have a question?
Just a question on the field trucks and stuff like that, is that something you service on site or is those taken somewhere else to be serviced?
Um, like the.
After hours, and it's, yeah, just trying to get an idea of after hours type of activities at my place.
Yeah, I mean, we don't really work on our own vehicles. We take them, you know, to a mechanic or anything like that. Is that what you're asking, if, if we need to do that kind of stuff?
As far as vehicles or any other kind of equipment might be serviced, just again, trying to get an idea of anything that might happen after hours.
Yeah, it's generally all service stuff offsite with mechanics and different stuff because we just don't have time or desire to do any of that.
Gotcha, okay.
So, yeah, every once in a while, there might be, you know, some Saturday work going on too just at the office or different things, but generally not servicing there, doing anything with the vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
I have an additional question on the, do you have, um, some ideas in, in mind for, for that additional building? Uh, what that might be, will that be kind of similar applications? Again, just, just kind of going to some of the neighbors' concerns.
Yeah, for us, I mean, ideally we'd like to keep it and develop it into something in the future, but I feasibly, I think we're going to try to just end up selling the lot. And so we don't know what any potential buyer might want to put on that piece of property, which is I think what the, what Alan or the staff report is trying to kind of nail down a little bit. So kind of have an idea of what will be done there. Um, so they'll certainly, the develop or design or, which is development agreement will run with the land. So whoever purchases the property with, after we've entered into that development agreement, will have to comply with that as well.
And they would have to still take a lot line adjustment request to the city council as well.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hanson? Seeing none, Mr. Hanson, is there any other closing remarks you'd like to make before we close the public hearing?
Uh, no, just thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Um, can I get a motion to close the public hearing for H dash twenty twenty dash zero zero seven eight, uh, sixteen twenty-five East Bentley Drive?
So moved.
So moved, second.
Okay, Commissioner Seal, motions to, uh, close and McCarville's seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the floor is ours. Uh, anyone want to go first?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner McCarville.
Um, I think this is a nice transition, uh, from some of the other uses that are close by uh, into the current residential. Um, it doesn't sound like it's going to be much of an impact and it sounds like, you know, seems like it'd be a good neighbor for them. An easy access for all their equipment. I would be in support of it. But I would, yeah, I would be in agreement, uh, with staff that, uh, that other lot not just go to weeds and be unkept in the mean, until it's developed.
And I believe that's a condition that they have to seed it and maintain it until it comes up time that they develop that lot.
Yep.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Pitser.
Uh, yeah, you know, I'm, I'm looking at this and, and the, the new comp plan that we put into place and this is definitely keeping with the comp plan. I think that this is going to blend well. Um, you know, of course, the surrounding neighbors having larger lots will be selling or won't be selling. If they want to, don't want to sell, they'll, it won't go through. But I like the blend that it's going to have with the properties to the west across the Locust, Locust Grove. And I think that, uh, again, as Commissioner McCarville said, this is going to be very low impact. It's not like it's mini mart and having a lot of stop and go customers on that, that area. So I'm in favor of this as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Pitser. Commissioner Castanelli or Commissioner Seal?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Castanelli.
Um, I, I'm, I'm in favor of it. It's a, you know, tough little, little spot there. You got commercial, um, bumping up against the residential. But I think, um, you know, once they work with, uh, staff on, on elevations and building materials and, and whatnot, I think, uh, it's kind of a farm, uh, larger lots sort of, for, sort of, uh, uh, mini farms over there. So I think it will, I think it can be done right and blend in. So all in all, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Seal.
Um, yeah, Madam Chair, I'm basically echo what has already been said, so I don't want to belabor the point. It's, looks like it's going to fit well, um, it's going to be pretty quiet. So, um, kind of like the fact that that's going to squeeze in there. It's going to take up a little bit of commercial space. Um, you know, it's not going to be another residence or multifamily or some crazy thing like that with a bunch of kids that are going to school. So, um, because our schools are a little crowded, so I like, like it. And I, the, the second, uh, conceptual drawing they have of it, to me, works a lot better just because of the way that the, the parking lot can definitely continue on to, to host for the, uh, whatever building goes in there in the future to the north.
I agree and ditto to everything everyone else said. So, um, if anybody would like to attempt to make a motion, certainly that is called for at this time.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
I'm going to get my thing up here so I don't mess this up too bad. After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval, approval to the city council a file number, um, H twenty twenty zero zero seven eight for sixteen twenty-five East Bentley Drive. That's it.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, motion by Commissioner Seal, the second by Commissioner McCarville, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. We will move on now to the public hearing for Jocelyn Park subdivision, H dash twenty twenty dash. Yep, Commissioner, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
I apologize for interrupting, um, but, uh, when the adoption of the agenda was done, I believe you mentioned item number nine being continued as well. Um, the Brighton team is on the phone and they wanted to make sure that that's what you were going to do. I didn't hear you open that up. I was wondering if you wanted to open that up for continuance at this time before you proceed.
Um, thank you, Madam Clerk. We did not, we did not, uh, continue it at the beginning. We left it kind of where it was on the agenda, but I believe our intention is to continue that application. Um, I don't know if, since we've already adopted the agenda, I don't know if we would need to go back and make a new motion to adopt the agenda again if we heard that first. I'm going to look at our legal counsel for that question. Andrea, we can't.
When it comes up, we can open for, um, to continue. We'll just take it up in its order at this point.
Yeah, I, I would say, Madam Clerk, I think it's every intention of ours to continue it. Um, but we'll move forward with, uh, the next application first. Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing for Jocelyn Park subdivision, H dash twenty twenty dash zero zero six seven, uh, and begin with the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it very much. Little tidbit, giving time to clean up the area, so thank you. All right, as stated, the next item on the agenda is Jocelyn Park subdivision. The project before you is located a site that consists of twelve point six seven five acres of land zoned R eight and is located at the south side of West Victory Road, parked in the quarter mile west of South Meridian Road. Subject property.
Interrupt you, or do you have some slides to show too that can show the maps and stuff while you're talking?
That would be very smart of me, yes.
Thank you.
Here, presentation. Maybe I'll get there eventually. There we go. Thank you, Madam Chair. Brief history on the subject property. It was annexed in two thousand thirteen as part of a larger area known as Victory South. There is an existing development agreement associated with this annexation and property, but the requested application and recorded DA do not require modification as the proposed development is consistent with those provisions contained in the existing DA. In addition, a preliminary plat was approved for this property in two thousand eighteen for the same titled plat named Jocelyn Park. The existing plat is set to expire in December of two thousand twenty, this December. The current developer is a new owner and wishes to obtain approval of a new plat with higher density more in line with the dimensional standards of the existing R eight zoning district. The proposed development is located in an area of the city where low and medium density residential developments are existing and anticipated, which you can see on these screens with the zoning in the center of the street. The subject site is surrounded by existing city of zoning and development except for a small parcel that abuts its northeastern property that is zoned R U T. Therefore, this project is an infill development for the definitions of C code. The proposed development has a gross density of five point one acres.
Hey Joe, for some reason, the sound quality is kind of going in and out a little bit. If you can help be closer to the microphone, that might help.
Yep. Um, I will get closer to the microphone. Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The proposed development has a gross density of five point one dwelling units per acre, meeting the density requirements for the future land use designation, medium density residential. In addition, the existing R eight zoning allows for detached single family residences with average minimum lot sizes above four thousand square feet. The proposed development meets these requirements. This development is proposed as one phase with an average lot size of four thousand four hundred fifty-five square feet. Staff finds the proposed use and density to meet the intent of the future designation and the zoning district. One quick note regarding this plat, there is a very tiny sliver, uh, north of the central open space. You can see my pointer on here, it is right abutting that, uh, that property is zoned R U T. They are, these, this applicant is going to feed or convey that parcel, that piece of the parcel over to the adjacent owner because there's a shed that crosses the property line. So it'll be a cleaner trans, transmittal of this land. Access for this development is proposed via extension of stub streets from adjacent subdivisions. The stub street located in the southeast corner of the site, West Winifex Street, is an existing stub from Meridian Heights subdivision to the east, south. The proposed connection is located in the northwest corner of the site, but is not yet constructed. This connection is to be constructed with phase two of the Timberline subdivision, which has received final plat approval, but has not yet received the engineering signature. These two local streets will, will supply the access points for this. In addition, the applicant is proposing to Stubby Street, the property located in the northeast of the site for future connectivity. On this stub street, the applicant is proposing a temporary hammerhead type turnaround to ensure safe fire turnout. In discussion with ACHD, the hammerhead type design will not meet the requirements and therefore the applicant will have to construct temporary turnarounds meets ACHD and the fire requirements. All street parking is to be required and to be provided in accord with the standards listed in UDC table eleven dash three C dash six for single family detached dwellings based on the number of bedrooms per unit. In addition, the applicant is proposing thirty-three foot street sections within forty-seven feet of right away, which would allow on-street parking where there are no driveways. A minimum of 10% qualified open space, meeting the standards listed in the UDC, is required. Based on the proposed plat of 12.9 acres, a minimum of 1.3 acres of qualified common open space should be provided. According to the open space exhibit, the applicant is proposing a total of 3.65 acres of open space. The exhibit shows three distinct areas of open space. One area in the south that contains the existing pond that is to remain. One along the entire northern boundary of the subject site and along, that abuts the Ridenbach Canal, and one centralized area. The large open space lot containing the pond abuts open space area in the Timberline subdivision, currently under construction, and abuts open space in the adjacent subdivision to the south built more states. In addition, there is a micro pathway connection to the west shown on the open space exhibit that also connects to the Timberline subdivision near the southwest corner. The submitted open space exhibit shows all of this area as qualifying, but in fact it is not. The existing pond and the open space lot that it is on, unfortunately, the pond is more than 25% of the lot in which it resides, and therefore the entire lot is not qualifying open space per the standards in our code. The other area of open space that is listed as qualified, but is not, is the in cap lot located at the south end of the property directly north of the open space lot that contains the pond. This area meets neither the 50 by 100 dimensions nor the minimum 5,000 square foot dimension. After removing the in cap lot and the lot containing the pond from the open space calculations, there are 2.46 acres of area that is qualifying open space. This area is still vastly more than the required amount of 1.3 acres. One area of concern for staff within the open space is that area directly north of lots 35, 37 block three, which is the lots located at the end of South Garibaldi Street as proposed on the plat, which is the cul-de-sac shown on the east side of the property. The applicant is proposing to leave an area of open space between the rear yards of these homes and irrigation district access road. The access road must be fenced off from this development, which leaves a thin area behind homes with the only true visibility coming from the open vision fencing of these three homes per fence. This area leads to nowhere and does not appear to offer any usable benefit for the development it left us. Even with the required open vision fencing along the rear of these lots, staff is concerned this area will be neglected due to the slope of the terrain and its location. Therefore, staff is recommending that this area be added to the adjacent buildable lots, lots 35 and 37, block three, instead of remaining open space. There are no multi-use pathways proposed or required with this development. There is an existing multi-use pathway on the north side of Victory Road, directly north of this subject site. The applicant is proposing micro pathways in multiple locations within the development to add pedestrian and bicycle connections throughout. These pathways, apologies, these pathways connect the central open space area with the five feet attached sidewalks located along the local streets throughout the development. The applicant is also proposing micro pathway, uh, the connection on the west side of the project to connect the pathway and open space connection in Timberline number one, as noted earlier. In addition, a pathway is proposed within the large open space lot abutting the, the Ridenbach Canal. Staff supports the addition of these micro pathways throughout the development, but has some concerns regarding their placement. First, staff believes the micro path connection from the central open space lot to the street on the west half of the property should be relocated two lots further north between lots 10 and 11, block three, to help with potential visibility issues and crime prevention. Second, staff has concerns over how the pathway within the large open space lot along the Ridenbach Canal is depicted on the submitted plans and where it is shown to connect to this Timberline subdivision to the west. The lot in Timberline that directly abuts the subject site in the northwest corner is a buildable lot and will have a privacy fence on the shared property boundary. Therefore, the proposed layout of the pathway shown would likely never become a reality. That is this section up in this northwest corner. The only other pedestrian access out to Victory Road from this site would be via the irrigation district access road, but this is not supported by staff nor the irrigation district. This access road should be fenced off from this open space lot to ensure a safer open space area along the canal. Because of these issues, staff proposes that the, that the proposed pathway be completely out of the irrigation district easement and looped around this northern open space lot for a walking path around the perimeter of this open space lot and connect back to the proposed sidewalks along West Cumberland Drive, which is the east-west street in the north of the property. Based on the area of the proposed plat, a minimum of one qualified side amenity is required to be provided. The applicant is proposing four qualified amenities to satisfy these requirements. One, a child's play structure. Two, a shaded picnic area. Three, walking paths. And four, an additional 20,000 square feet of qualified open space. The Ridenbach Canal runs through the northern portion of the subject site and essentially makes up the required landscape buffer along Victory in its area and location. Per the UDC, this waterway is required to be tight. However, the applicant wishes to keep the canal open and act as a buffer between Victory Road and Arterial Street, and the common open space lot proposed south of the canal. Staff supports this proposition by the applicant. The applicant is requesting a council waiver to keep the canal open. The location of this canal on this site also brings up issues with the required frontage improvements along Victory Road. ACHD has conditioned the applicant via their draft staff report to construct detached sidewalk along Victory no closer than 31 feet from Central Avenue. The applicant has concerns about the viability of this requirement. Staff recommends that following the P and Z hearings, that the applicant and ACHD can begin working together to determine the most viable location of a sidewalk along this outside of Victory Road. This is not a condition within the staff report, but staff believes working is to issue out before the city council hearings, Best Avenue Boulevard. After all of this, staff does recommend approval of the subject preliminary plat application. I withstand questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, any questions for staff?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli.
Uh, Joe, is that, um, is that cul-de-sac? Um, looks kinda long. Is that within code? I can't see the name of the street, but.
Commissioner Cassinelli, uh, yes, sir. We did check that and it, it does meet code. It's close, as you can tell, but it does meet code.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Uh, just a question on the, the canal there. Um, is, would there be no fence or anything right up to it? Or is, or is there a fence that's already supplied by the irrigation district?
Commissioner Seal, thank you. Great question. Um, their landscape plan shows a fence on the north side of the access road. Um, in my staff report, I noted that that is, that should be moved to the south side of the access road in order to keep the irrigation district access road and, and their easement completely separate from the open space that is proposed on the north of this property. So they should and are required by code to provide a fence.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Joe, just to confirm again, it sounds like one of the biggest challenges is about the sidewalk, um, because of the placement of the, where the canal sits and the ability to have a buffer and the, the sidewalk there. Um, and staff feels confident that, that they can work out some sort of agreement ahead of council on those items? Or is there anything else you want us to be specific on deliberating on with that?
Madam Chair, thank you. Yes, um, as you can see, uh, well, I didn't make this. I took this from the applicant, so sorry, Bonnie. But it, it is a very good representation of the Ridenbach Canal and what ACHD is proposing. Um, as you can see here in red, this is this, where generally the sidewalk would be as proposed or as conditioned by ACHD. The dashed light blue line is the current toe, so the very edge of the slope of the elevated Ridenbach Canal. So if this were to be built as conditioned by ACHD, they would be cutting into that slope. And I, from my understanding, this has not been signed off by the irrigation district, and I presume that there would be some engineering issues. Again, I'm not an engineer, but that type of situation should be handled very carefully. So between now and council, I think that this can be worked out. I have been in contact with ACHD all day, and they, they do agree that this can be worked out fairly easily and quickly. And there would be no need to, uh, continue the project from tonight other than with your recommendation of approval or denial.
Joe, just one more question. Is there sidewalk already existing on the east and the west boundaries of this section?
Madam Chair, there will be on the west boundary due to the Timberline number two. Uh, but to the east, there is not. The canal continues and it curves along, and there is not much room at all between the edge of right of way and the canal. Um, and for note for everybody, on the north side of West Victory is a multi-use pathway directly north of the site.
Great. Thanks, Joe. Uh, any other questions for staff? Are we ready for the applicant to come speak to us? My clerk, that's, uh, time for the applicant.
Good evening, uh, Chairperson Holland and members of the commission. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thanks, Bonnie. And if you wouldn't mind giving an address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Yep, uh, for sure. I am Bonnie Layton. I'm with WH Pacific, uh, 690 South Industry Way, Suite 10, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. And, uh, I appreciate your time this evening to consider this project, um, and really want to thank staff for all of their hard work and, um, really working through the issues with us. So I, I think this will be a great project for the city. And, um, you know, I, I don't really have too many comments. I think, um, Joseph's done a great job. Um, and as he mentioned, we've been in communication with ACHD. Um, I, I think this, uh, the shot that's on the screen right now is, is kind of the, the biggest thing that we just want to work through. And, um, I, I think we're confident that we can, uh, come up with a solution. Um, if we wanna, Joseph, do you have that other, um, slide that I had sent over that shows the pictures of the existing condition? So, um, I guess generally speaking, I mean, I don't want to, uh, take up a bunch of time, but you know, as he mentioned, we're proposing, um, in our development, you know, some, a little bit higher density, um, open space. We redid the calculations to make sure that we were in compliance. Um, the neighborhood meeting that we had, uh, basically the questions were, um, about the development and the fencing and how that all worked out. Um, I, I thought it was a fairly standard neighborhood meeting. Um, the, the, um, slide that you're seeing right now in terms of where the fencing is for the canal and how that transitions and do I have control of the screen or am I able to flip through some things? Or can I share my screen to talk about a couple of things?
Um, I'll ask Chris or Adrian if they can help with that.
Okay.
Bonnie, you can share your screen. Give us just a second.
Okay. I see a green, I, I see a green share screen, uh, button here.
You're good to go now. Go ahead and click that and then choose your presentation and you should be good to go.
Okay, perfect. Um, let's start with this one. So this is my, um, I just kind of built this in PowerPoint. So, um, Joseph has shown you this and really what we were looking at is just the, the frontage improvements. I went out the other day. Are, are you able to see my screen, everyone?
Yep, we can see it. Thanks, Bonnie.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Lisa. So, just looking at the existing conditions, and like I said, I think we can work this out with ACHD, um, the way the canal comes. And, um, so I, I took a site from the Timberline subdivision, um, just kind of looking east, and that's the center in the picture, in the, this picture in the center here where there's the canal. And there's actually quite a bit of elevation, um, when you, when you drive down and around the site. And so, um, the, the photos here on the left, um, like this photo, for example, is just looking east. And then, uh, a, a more zoomed in photo of that. And really where that sidewalk would be is behind the power pole, just for a frame of reference. So we get quite a bit of slope up there. And I don't know if any of you folks have been out there, but, um, this picture down here in the bottom that I've got my cursor on, I'm standing across the street and, um, the top of the, the canal road is above the height of, um, the sign that's posted for, for the project. And then also just looking, this is another picture in the corner. So if I'm standing right here looking west, and that's this picture here. So there's actually, it's, there's quite a bit of top, topography there. It's a fairly busy, um, fairly busy road, as you know. And, and then, um, as we come up here, one of our concerns is just, I mean, it's off of our sight, but the ability to develop that right of way. There's a, um, a headgate here for, um, for the water and just, you know, how, how do we make this all work? How do we provide a safe, um, pedestrian access? So currently, Timberline subdivision happens here. There's an entrance that's about here. And then, um, as Joseph mentioned, a great multifunctional path through here. Um, I, I do have concerns, obviously, just, just being out on the site, um, constructing a sidewalk along this frontage and, and then it stops here, but you're really pinning people in at a low spot. And I think that's what this, this image that Joseph had showed you earlier, there's quite a bit of grade change. There's a 16 feet of elevation change to here, kind of from the top. Um, and so our concern was you bring pedestrians along this sidewalk and, and this is all what's, what I've shown is what has been, uh, what ACHD has conditioned. And so we, so we bring that sidewalk in along here and then you stop them here and then they're penned in. And at the same time, this area as you're, as you're heading, um, from the east to the west, it's dropping down. And so, um, you know, yep.
It's Joe. Just to let you know, we missed like the last 30 seconds of what you said.
Oh.
Apologize for that.
Well, no, we can hear it on our side, Joe. I might be missing it.
Everybody.
Okay. So, Joe, I'll, I'll just, uh, reiterate. So there's quite a bit of fall, actually. So the, the crossing that happens kind of to the west, um, or, or the entrance, um, into Timberline, which is where we take access off of, from Victory. Um, you know, is good sightlines. Um, and then you drop pretty drastically through our site and you're kind of penned in on this corner and bringing a sidewalk through here. Um, you know, we're, we're just concerned about that from, um, once people get here, there's not a sidewalk. So then are they jumping up on this, this bank? Like I said, there's a headgate here or are they crossing the street here with traffic coming? So those are some of our concerns, of course, also with this, um, light bluish green line, dash lined here. That's the toe of the slope of the elevated, um, canal. And so obviously the structural integrity of that. I, I did speak briefly with Gary Curtis with the irrigation district. And of course, they, you know, that they have concerns about that too. But I think those are things that we can work through, uh, generally speaking. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and see, Joseph, am I able to, are we able to scroll back to, um, any of your slides? Or how should we do that? Let's see. Apologize, everyone, for being kind of, it's all right. I actually had a, another public hearing this week, but it was, it was in person, although most people were not in attendance. But, um, uh, yeah, so, you know, generally speaking, um, we'll work with ACHD and I think we can, we can resolve that issue. Obviously, we want to provide, um, an improved frontage and, and also pedestrian safety. I think that's first and foremost. Um, in terms of some of the staff comments, um, you know, some of these, some of this area is going to develop potentially in the future, how that develops and this open space back behind here. Um, you know, that's, that's something that I think, oh, thank you. Um, so we, so we've got that path for future connection. Um, let's see. But if that's something that, you know, if we can't work that out with the irrigation district or, uh, staff feels strongly about, I think we're still grossly over the amount of open space. or Steph feels strongly about, I think we're still grossly over the amount of open space that, that we need to have. Let's see. I, I really think that was it. In, in my mind, we've, I think we've got a great development with a lot more open space than that's qualified. I think the pond will be an amenity. I like, you know, the connection that we've tried to coordinate with the adjacent property on the eastern boundary. Our intent is to construct a new fence along that line. That was one of the comments that was brought up by the neighbors in the neighborhood meeting. And so we would build that along our eastern boundary. So with that, I don't think, can't think of anything I'm needing to address other than that. So I'll stand for any questions at this time.
So one question about the fencing, I know Joe had mentioned there was a condition that they were trying to remove some of the fencing that was around the pond. That, Joe, is that a different piece than the eastern boundary? Is that, are you talking about the western boundary? Could you clarify for us?
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's a great question. I'm referring to the western boundary by the pond lot right here. I had proposed that they remove the fencing, just to keep this area open. I can understand if the applicant does not want to have it all the way open. But some opening and availability for residents to co-mingle is highly recommended. And recommended by code to have open space contiguous and accessible between subdivisions.
Thanks for clarifying, Joe. Bonnie, are you okay with the other conditions that staff had made on the open space, looping the pedestrian pathway up on the, the northern open space lot? And also removing the open space that was behind those three cul-de-sac lots there?
Yeah, so let's, let's talk about the, the first one up here in the, in the northern. So Joseph, as you were talking about, and we've got, I see what you mean, where there's the, am I able, or am I able to? Can you see my cursor moving or is that not possible?
So up in that... No, I don't think, I don't think we can because it's now being shared by city.
Okay, so Joseph, up in that northwest corner, what you're talking about is where that, where our path is shown. You're saying that that's not going to connect now. There, that's, that's a residential lot, is it? Did I catch you right on that?
Yes, that is correct, Bonnie. Yeah, that's a buildable lot, so it's just going to go into a fence.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I don't see the issue in looping that down. I guess there's no fence between us and Timberline. Let's, oh, wait, hold on. Let me see. I think that piece was mislabeled, actually. That's not supposed to be a pathway. That's, that's actually the canal road or the ditch road. Canal road there. So that's not actually part of our pathway. That's outside of goodness, let me see.
Are you talking about that whole stretch that's up in the north? None of that's supposed to be pathway?
Yeah, so that, if we look at, Joseph, can you scroll to the plat? Oh, well, this shows it, too. So there's a, there's a fence there, and then there's right, right there. So that's actually the area, that's part of the irrigation access. Let's see. You scroll to, I, I don't know if it's forward or back, Joseph. There was, so in, in that plat exhibit, you can see where the fence line is. No, there you go. I think you can see that. You can also see it in that exhibit I sent you today. That one's probably more clearly marked. So you can see where those Xs are. That's where, that's where the fence line is. And that, that exhibit was labeled wrong. That's the canal road.
Would you be willing to do a pathway that would kind of loop around that block one open space?
Good question. So we've got the sidewalk along there and along this southern boundary. I guess we could look at what other amenities that we could put into that public or that open space in that park. I mean, I think we're, we're over on that. But we could, I could look at that and, you know, see what we could do there. I don't want it to be too, too redundant with some of the connectivity that we already have.
Sure, I think when staff saw that, I think they were recommending putting a, a loop there. I'm not sure if they were referring to the, the canal road there, too. But yeah, this, this clearly shows up the canal road, not a visual, but it was confusing on the other open space exhibit. So I, I think you would definitely want to change out your open space exhibit before it goes to council. A little bit.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. We'll definitely do that and make sure that that's updated. You know, I think with the amenities that we have on the north end and given the existing site conditions with, you know, looking at what the irrigation district is going to want, they're, they're not going to want people all over their, all over their canal road. And, you know, obviously, nobody wants to fish a kid out of a canal, right?
Right.
So I, you know, I think we've done a good, good job of providing some internal connectivity. And then also, of course, taking access through Timberline. You know, we don't have any direct access out to Victory. So, you know, as a, as a resident in the area, you know, I'm a walker myself. So just looking at how somebody could loop through their subdivision, feel safe and enjoy some of the open space and the natural amenities. But I, we will definitely update that open space exhibit for sure.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And then the other question is about the kind of star area that's next to the cul-de-sac there. I know staff was recommending to some of those lots up. So that way we didn't have kind of a small strip that, that didn't really lead to a connecting pathway somewhere else, more for safety than anything else.
Right, I mean, right now, you know, we're, as Joseph mentioned, we're deeding some of that over because of some existing encroachments and just trying to, trying to clean that up. But potentially in the future, as that property develops, you know, just looking at what's that opportunity? You know, to me, that looks like a great space for, kind of like a dog run, like a, you know, nice narrow space where you can throw a ball and run your dog back and forth. But, I mean, we're not, you know, I, I guess having that open space back behind those lots, it's nice to have that open space, but we're not completely married to that. I mean,
One thought, too, just maybe for consideration, and then I can open it up for other commissioners to ask questions. I'm dominating the time here, sorry about that. I'm, I'm almost wondering, there's so many lots on that cul-de-sac. And I know it always gets tough when you've got so many lots on a turnaround because people tend to overpark on those cul-de-sacs or, or trash days become complicated. Would you be willing to consider removing one of the lots off the cul-de-sac and just kind of reconfiguring the way that that open space is shaped? So it's less of a star, but more of a kind of square usable area? And then having those other two lots that touch that pathway as proposed kind of go up and, and close off there?
Well, nobody likes to lose lots, but sorry. Actually, if I had my druthers, what I'd do is I'd shift that, that connecting path and make it run more north-south at the end, the, the terminus of that cul-de-sac, just as a visual compliment, you know? And that's what I would do. I, I think those lots are, are quite large, so there will be an opportunity to park more, to, to park vehicles there. They're obviously larger than, than the rest of the lots in that area. So yeah, I'd like to not lose that lot. I, I think maybe we could design it in a way where we shift that connection. So access from where it is now in the cul-de-sac up to the rest. I, I'd put it more north-south. And then you can kind of make a, kind of a statement of it, if that makes sense. And I've, I've seen that done in a number of communities, and I think that's a great, a great alternative. Because it's, but I think it works well in, in the examples that I've seen in other places. So that, that's how I would handle that.
Okay. Other commissioners have any questions for, for Bonnie? Hearing none. Bonnie, I think we'll open it up. Oh, no, we got one. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Seal.
No, that was Joe.
Sorry, Joe, go ahead.
Miss Picken for each other quite often during these commission meetings. Just to be clear, my main concern regarding this open space behind lots 35 to 37 is more so that area between 36 and 37 because it kind of gets pinched down there. Thinking on the fly here, but if, if the applicant were to be amenable to rotating those lots to the west and having the pathway loop around in the lot that is currently lot 37, maybe losing lot 37 and rotating the other two over, that would be, you know, possibly ideal to kind of open up that whole area and have a pathway that loops around, just a potential option there.
Thanks, Joe, I appreciate the suggestion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Is that where that portion of that open space terminates there on the, on the eastern boundary that, thank you, Joe, that Joe's concerned about? Is that right to the east of that, is that a developed lot? What is that over there, just to the right? There you go, right there.
Commissioner Castanelli, yes, sir, that's a developed lot. It's actually, it's just a fence at the backyard. The access road kind of, as you can see, curves north a little bit and goes right around it. And this area right here continues the irrigation district access road. Because then this is somebody's lot in the backyard.
So that, yes, so that little green space there would, would just terminate at somebody's backyard?
That is correct, sir, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I would like to see at least lots 35 and 36 rotate and have, instead of that pathway kind of ending on the canal road, having that access from the cul-de-sac go through between those lots instead. So we just have it loop into that common space instead. I think that would help. Other questions? Are we ready to open up for public testimony and then come back?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
I don't know if there was anything else, but I, I just want to ask the applicant if they're, there's, I know these were the pathways and stuff was a lot of the conditions, but are they, they're good with all the other, and, and Joe, I don't know off the top of my head, there's other conditions in there. But I just, I just want to see if they're acceptable of all the other conditions.
Yes, Commissioner Castanelli, we are acceptable with all the other conditioner, conditions. And to your point about kind of rotating those lots and looping that through and splitting, splitting that access point maybe farther to the east on that cul-de-sac. I think that's a, that would be a great suggestion, just to kind of loop that through. I think that connects in well and then also doesn't limit the potential for future, future access somehow, you know, to an adjacent parcel that might be developed or something. So does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to testify on this tonight?
Madam Chair, we have two people signed in, but neither wish to testify.
Okay, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to testify or anyone on Zoom, if you'd raise your hand. We'll wait just a second to see if there's anyone that, that indicates interest. Hearing none. Bonnie, any closing thoughts you'd like to make?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Pittsir?
Thank you, before, I, I'm sorry, Bonnie, but I just had a, a quick question. So when, when you purchased this, this, this development, there were, there was approved for 23 lots, and now you're going to 67. I'm looking at the lots along the eastern side where you're having 12, looks like 12 lots going up against an A4. I'm a little concerned about the heavy, heavy density there going up against those lots that I just wonder if maybe we can better transition those to what's going in behind there. 12 along that border.
Commissioner Pittsir, one, one comment to make is that the, it's a different owner now, and they've decided to come back with a new plat. So the old plat's not, not by the same owner. And so they're, they're trying to get a new approval, and they are zoned already R8. So they're, they're within code for the R8.
But I, I realize that, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just, I'm just saying as, I'm looking at what's going to transition on that east side. And I'm just concerned that there's a, you know, they have the bigger lots at the end of the cul-de-sac. And I think just for transitioning purposes, if they maybe spread this out, made those just a hair bit bigger would transition better for the subdivision to the other side.
Yeah, I think that's a great question, Commissioner Pittsir. Bonnie, I'll let you answer that if, if you'd like.
Sure, thank you, Commissioners, Commissioner Pittsir. So what, what we really tried to do in that, as Ms. Holland mentioned, that we're, this is zoned for an R8. So there is that, there is a difference from the previous application to this application. What we really tried to do is to do a one to a one and a half difference. The other thing that our client is doing here is constructing a brand new fence line, solid fence line, all of the same material. So it's not hodgepodge along our eastern boundary, which of course, the properties to the west, earth to the east, pardon me, will have the benefit of. And so, you know, as we've tried to be really conscious of that and, and do a good job of how do we make that transition and be mindful of the residents? And when we had the neighborhood meeting, we talked about this and came and walked through that issue with the neighbors and talking about, you know, we're going to provide this continuous fence. The, the, the buyer of the property that's going to develop the homes, it's going to be more patio-style homes, which is something that's consistent with not only the zoning, but also with the comp plan for providing a variety of homes in the area. And so we, we feel like this is a good transition. Oftentimes, those patio homes are really singles, it, single story where where those other homes to the west or to the east are also six feet above our site. So there's a, it's a pretty big grade difference in there. So it, it, it's hard to see on this image per se. But there's going to be not only topography difference, but then we really tried to make sure that we, we were mindful when we laid out the lots, that they complied with the zone, but they also that they complied with the zone, but they also respected um, what was happening to the east.
Thank you, Madam Chair, follow-up?
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Pittsir.
So are these patio homes, is the HOA going to be, or are there going to be HOA dues that take care of the yards? Or uh, when you, or is each homeowner going to be taking care of their own landscaping?
Uh, Commissioner Pittsir, so I've um, I've done a number of different projects. I'm, I'm not sure on that. Um, I actually, I have a degree in architecture and started out my career in residential architecture. So there's a number of different ways to make that happen. Uh, I think the concern from the neighbors was, what is that going to feel and look like? This development in comparison to theirs. And so, looking at that patio-style home and, and what that archetype sort of looks like, we felt like um, the, the massing and the layout of those and how those are going to live for the residents. And based on, you know, being consistent again with the comp plan and, and the zoning, you know, providing, providing something that's um, that's consistent with, with the comp plan. So I, to answer your question, I'm not sure h- how that'll be. I think there's a number of different ways to make that happen.
Thank you.
Okay, you have any final questions? Uh, Bonnie, any closing thoughts you'd like to make?
Um, just again, I want to thank the staff for all of their hard work on this. And um, you know, I, I think it's going to be a, a great project for the community. So, and I appreciate your, all of your time this evening, for sure.
Thanks, Bonnie. Um, with that, can I get a motion to close the public hearing and move to deliberation for? Lost the file number, uh, H dash twenty-two zero zero six seven for Jocelyn Park.
So moved.
Motion by, motion by Commissioner Castanelli, second by Commissioner McCarville. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, floor is open to us, so I'll start, um, since I've got the floor. And I think a couple of my comments, so I, rather than the condition that was in the staff report, um, which is section eight, A one A, um, where it says revise the plat to include the area behind lots thirty-five through thirty-seven, block three, as part of the building lots instead of common open space. I would prefer to see those three lots rotated and have the pathway come through the cul-de-sac on the eastern boundary and loop through that common area instead to make a, a more walkable amenity. So that would be one thing I'd like to say as a condition. I, I wouldn't mind seeing one of the lots disappear, but I don't know that I necessarily need to condition that on the cul-de-sac. But I would be open to other commissioners' thoughts on that. And I'm trying to remember if there was something actually in the, Joe, was there something in there about the pathway on the northern um, open space lot about looping that in? Since that we said that that's not a, a pathway, but it's actually the canal road?
Madam Chair, uh, yes, that is correct. I did have that in there because it was labeled as a pathway. I thought that they were trying to build a separate pathway. Now that I know that they're not, um, I'm not necessarily in a fight for them to put a looped pathway through there since there is the sidewalk along the road and the top, you know, the open space lot isn't a mile deep. So that is up to commission if they want to strike that condition altogether and require that they provide an op- a revised open space exhibit that correctly labels that.
Um, can you by chance know what that condition number is, Joe, off the top of your head?
Uh, Madam Chair, no, I do not, I apologize.
Okay, I'll keep looking in here. Um, overall, I think the, the development itself, I think it fits well as an infill project. I appreciate that they've done as much open space as they have because they've gone above and beyond what's required. And so I, I do appreciate that, even though they're a little bit smaller lots and I always like seeing a little more space between them so that they can match up fence lines. I think they've, they've done a fairly good job with this concept plan here. Um, I'd open up for anyone else who would like to discuss, though.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Uh, we'll go with Commissioner Seal first.
Uh, just a couple of observations on it. There's um, as far as the amenities piece of it, looks like the um, the, the north end there is getting the, the top lot and things like that. But around the pond, be nice to see something, you know, um, maybe gazebo or some, you know, I, I don't know what the elevations there are, but s- something there, people could sit and enjoy the, you know, the pond in that area there. It'd be nice to see something along those lines. And then the, the common area that's in the middle, um, to me, that's, I, I don't like that common area really at all. So um, ma- mainly because the entire thing is behind houses and it's going to be fenced off from the neighbors there. So you're kind of creating an area where it doesn't have a lot of visibility. So that, that one's a tough one. So I mean, if something was going on and let's say the sheriffs needed to get in there, they've, they gotta go find that area back there. So I just, I, I just don't have a good feeling about that. I know some of it's going to be restructured as far as where the pathways are going to go through. And I mean, as far as a little common area for a family to enjoy, it's, it's nice, but it, it just seems like it's closed off from the rest of the world, to me.
Well, I think that's, that might be why they made the condition to move the pathway up two blocks um, on that western road as well. So that way it, it opens up more into seeing visibility there.
Right, but it's still, I mean, it's, it's definitely closed. To me, it seems like it's closed off, so. But um, you know, like I said, there's no, there's just not a lot of visibility back there. So um, that, that's a, a concern to me. That, you know, would make me not support the project. The rest of it's pretty nice and I, I mean, that area is kind of, it, it's a strange area out there because there are so many elevation changes and the road's kind of strange as it goes through and everything. So I mean, trying to design something that would fit into this area had to have uh, some challenges for sure. So to me, it looks like they did a pretty good job with it. Again, the only concern I have is just that, that open area just seems like it's really confined and not a lot of visibility.
Madam Chair.
I would, I would agree with you on that, and I think that's part of the reason I was thinking maybe one of those cul-de-sac lots could go away too, which would open up more visibility to it. But uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Castanelli, go ahead. Or was that, that was Joe talking?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, yeah, I just wanted to, Madam Chair, just wanted to clarify that condition that you were requesting about the pathway is condition number four.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, and then just to quickly speak to what Commissioner Seal said, the code dictates that a budding common open space slots, that the fencing will be open vision. So it won't be completely closed off, but I, I understand your sentiments, sir.
Thanks for that clarification.
Uh, Commissioner Castanelli, I know you wanted to go next.
Um, yeah, I'm uh, I would like to, I, I'm gonna kind of echo some of the comments you made moving of those lots. I, I would like to see us at least recommend a looped pathway up north. I don't think we, I'm, I'm fine with re- with removing that condition, obviously, but if we could, I'd like to recommend it because I think it would be a nice fit. I also then would uh, echo Commissioner uh, Seal to have something on the south by the pond. I'm not, I, I can, I get the issue with the, with that open space, how it's confined. But I think throughout the city, there's, you get a lot of those types of things in different subdivisions. Um, uh, I, I've got a couple in, in my surrounding neighborhoods when I go on walks and whatnot. There's, there's places like that where you can only get to a big open field through a pathway through two lots, kind of a thing. So I see similar, I've seen it quite a few places. Other than that, I like the idea of the patio homes. I think if they, you know, they're gonna, it sounds like they're gonna work with the neighbors there, already are, to the east, getting the fencing. So um, all in all, I'm, I'm uh, in support of it, it's good. Infill's always tough, um, but I think this, uh, I think it works, just tweak a couple of those things.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner McCarville.
Um, yeah, I, I agree. I mean, infill is always tough and I think it would make that, I mean, the open space back there is not ideal, but I think just rotating those three lots would go a long ways to making it better. And having a pathway coming back out to that cul-de-sac. So yeah, overall, I'd, I'd be in support of it, it's a tough, tough space.
Okay, Commissioner Pittsir, any comments?
Hi, yes, thank you, um, Madam Chair. I'm, my screen's getting all messed up over here on my side, so I apologize. I'm going to echo Commissioner Seal's concerns about it being so cut off. But rather than lose a lot in the cul-de-sac, maybe lose the lot that's just to the north of where that cut-through is. I think that would open that up. Um, I appreciate the applicants working with the neighbors to the east. Uh, I was concerned about that density, but it sounds like with the elevation change, that they've done a good job of mitigating that. So um, I don't, I don't see an issue with that. I think that some seeding or something around the pond, I think would be, I know they said they're going to beautify that pond, which is great. Nobody wants a, everybody would like a beautiful pond, but maybe add some seeding around it. But I think that's my own, I, I think my biggest concern is that star-shaped uh, open space there. Maybe if they, like I said, maybe if they turned one of those smaller lots, instead of taking one of the larger lots, might accomplish the same thing and wouldn't be as painful. So, those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Commissioner Pittsir. Um, just to recap, so you have the numbers. It's condition one A and three B on that, um, those lots that go back behind the cul-de-sac. So we would need to modify that. Um, it sounds like everybody was in agreement with at least rotating those three lots to have some sort of pathway loop that would go around there. We could make the recommendation to lose a lot somewhere to give more visibility to the complex. I don't know that I want to specify necessarily where that would be, but maybe that's just a consideration that we would ask them to come back to council with more visibility into that open space somehow and give them some discretion to be able to figure out how to do that. Um, and then item four was the other one we need to modify, which is the requirement of looping that pathway up on the northern open space. So just for whoever wants to make a motion at some point, those are the, the item numbers within the staff report that we want to make sure we pay attention to.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Are we ready for a motion?
Always open for entertaining a motion.
Um, if, if nobody else, if there's no other comments, I'll uh, go ahead and throw something out here. After considering all staff, I didn't give anybody a second to jump in. But after considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to City Council file number H dash twenty-two zero zero six seven, as presented in staff report for the hearing date of Ag- of August sixth, twenty-twenty, with the following modifications. Conditions, one A and three B, um, look to move those lots, shift them to the west. And bring that open space connection more towards the east. And add a recommendation in there to perhaps look at, at losing a lot to even further open up that open space to get a little bit more visibility in there. Striking condition number four, for that looped pathway to the north, since that is actually the um, the canal roadway. Uh, but make a recommendation um, to add a looped pathway in there. And then three, recommend uh, another amenity down by the pond. Seeding area, benches, gazebo, something of that nature, just to, to get a little bit more uh, gathering space down there.
Okay, we have a motion. Anyone want a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Castanelli and a second by Commissioner Pittsir, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And uh, we will move on to the um, item nine, just to open again for the continuance. And that is public hearing for TM Center H dash twenty-two zero zero seven four by Brighton. And the applicant requests continuance in order to be able to meet with staff to discuss um, some other staff requirements pertaining, pertaining to street and pathway requirements in relation to what's been designed, approved, and constructed in the site in previous phases. Uh, if staff has any other comments, they're certainly welcome to make those if they'd like. I don't believe we need to hear from the applicant, I'm, I'm okay continuing this to September third. Staff, are there any other comments that you'd like to make on that?
Uh, Madam Chair, you summarized everything very well, thank you. Nothing to add.
Thanks, Bill. Uh, with that, can I get a motion to continue um, public hearing for TM Center H dash twenty-two zero zero seven four to the hearing date of September third?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Seal, second by Commissioner McCarville, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then before we do our final motion, I know Bill would like to talk us a little bit about um, some changes happening at City Hall and our October meeting date and potentially discuss a alternate date for October. So Bill, I'll give you the floor before we make that final motion.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Before we adjourn for this evening, I just wanted to let you know, uh, we've, as you're aware, we're experiencing some technical difficulties in the council chambers. So I anticipate the city's gonna do some upgrades in our council chambers and we're anticipating targeting the last week of September, first week of October. And so that's going to cut into our October first hearing date. And so more likely, we're going to have to cancel that hearing. And I wanted to at least uh, ask the commission if they had an appetite to have a special hearing either. We're looking probably October, the third hearing in October would be the fifteenth, which shouldn't affect us. But either looking to have a special meeting on the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth. So I just want to open that up with all of you to discuss which date would be your preference for a special hearing in October. I know staff's preference would be the twenty-second, but uh, again, I don't know what your schedules are.
I, I know I would not be able to attend on the twenty-ninth.
Either is fine with me.
I will technically be out on uh, maternity leave at that time, but if it's uh, still available via Zoom, I probably can attend if it's on the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth.
I would say if it's staff's preference for the twenty-second, let's do the twenty-seventh.
Do appreciate that. Well, I'll make a note of that, and as we start moving closer to that hearing date, I'll make sure everyone else is aware of that as well. Thank you.
So, um, Commissioner Pittsir, we've appreciated you being with us, and tonight is her official last meeting with us. So we wish you well in your new location that you're moving to, and we will certainly miss having you on the commission. But thanks for all of your, your work and effort with us, we appreciate you.
Thank you very much, and, and I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna miss it myself. I'm, 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 I'm very sad. So with that, I move that we adjourn the meeting of August sixth, twenty-twenty, word is adjourned, I got it.
Perfect. Uh, have a second for that? All right, we've got a motion and a second. Thank you, Commissioner Pittsir, for that last motion, we appreciate you, and thanks, everybody, for a great meeting.
Thank you.
Do we want to vote on that motion? Oh, yeah, sorry, all those.
Aye.
Everybody was so quick to say goodbye.
Everybody was. All right, any opposed? Motion adjourned, we are adjourned at eight oh eight PM on uh, August sixth.
Holy smokes, that's a record.
Yeah, lately. All right, thanks, everyone.